Call the council meeting to order at 7:00 PM. I just wanted to make a note that we know some people have some signs, which is fine. We just hope you keep them in your lap and don't raise them above your head or wave them in any way that might distract or block someone's view. But we do welcome signs. That is fine to have. Could I ask the secretary to call the roll, please?
Council President Briggs?
Here.
Counselor Bariantos?
Yes.
Counselor Blaser?
Here.
Counselor Fitzgerald?
Here.
Counselor Jantsch?
Here.
Counselor Schilling?
Here.
Counselor Shane?
Here.
Counselor Spivey?
Here.
Would everybody stand and join me in the flag of allegiance, please?
The flag of allegiance is the United States of America and the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If you bear with me, I have a couple of proclamations to read tonight. The first one is for the Building Safety Month proclamation. Whereas the city of Dallas, Oregon is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depends on the safety and essential role of our homes, buildings, and infrastructure play, both in everyday life and when disasters strike. And whereas our confidence in the resilience of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians, building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, plumbers, and others in the construction industry who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings. And whereas these guardians are dedicated members of the International Code Council, a nonprofit that brings together local, state, territorial, tribal, and federal officials who are experts in the built environment to create and implement the highest quality codes to protect us in the buildings where we live, learn, work, play. And whereas these modern building codes include safeguards to protect the public from hazards such as hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, wildland fires, floods, and earthquakes. And whereas Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of our communities, largely unknown protectors of public safety are local code officials who assure us of safe, sustainable, and affordable buildings that are essential to our prosperity. And whereas Game On, the theme for Building Safety Month 2025, encourages all to get involved and raise awareness about building safety on a personal, local, and global scale. And whereas each year, in observance of Building Safety Month, people all over the world are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety, resilience, and economic investment at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting lives and property. Now therefore, I, Richard Slack, Mayor of the City of Dallas, Oregon, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2025 as Building Safety Month. Concordly, I encourage our citizens to join us as we participate in Building Safety Month activities. The second proclamation tonight is for National Historic Preservation Month. Whereas the National Trust for Historic Preservation established May as Historic Preservation Month in 1973 as a way to promote historic places for the purpose of instilling national and community pride, promoting heritage tourism, and showing the social and economic benefits of historic preservation. And whereas the Oregon Historical Society recognizes May as Historic Preservation Month and sponsors annual events around the state to instill awareness and promote the historic assets in Oregon. And whereas Historic Preservation Month can instill awareness of the local historically significant buildings and landmarks to the residents of Dallas and surrounding communities. And whereas historic preservation can be a community discussion uniting residents behind an important cause. Now therefore, I, Richard Slack, Mayor of the City of Dallas, do hereby proclaim May 2025 as National Historic Preservation Month in the City of Dallas, and I urge all citizens to recognize and participate in this special observance. All right, then. You have the introduction?
Yeah, we do. Thank you, Mayor. We have one introduction tonight. I'll invite our Economic and Community Development Director Charlie Mitchell to make that introduction.
Thanks, Brian. Mayor and counsel, I'd like to introduce you to Matthew Tholen, who is the newest member of the Economic and Community Development Department. Matthew started with us last week as our new Code Services Specialist, replacing Dailene Anglin, who retired from us back in March. Please help me welcome Matthew. He's right there.
Do you have any other recommendations or proclamations? All right, we'll move on to public comment. For the record, please provide us with your name and whether or not you live in the city limits of Dallas. You have up to three minutes. It is your turn to talk and ours to listen. You are responsible for the content, even if it was written by someone else. Please direct all comments to the mayor. Do not direct your comments to individual counselors, staff, or members of the audience. Defamatory or libelous comments will not be accepted. It is expected that you will maintain decorum and respect for each other. A wide variety of viewers watch these proceedings, therefore, we would kindly ask that you refrain from the use of offensive language and name-calling. Distractions take attention from the speaker. The audience, city council members, and city staff are asked to focus on the speaker during their time by being respectfully quiet. The first person I have up is Robert Greenway.
2223 Salvation Academy Street. Mr. Mayor, I'm supposed to address you. Hitler and your SS. You've been cheating your citizens for years and in the same breath asking for money for a police station. Your trash has gone up, our trash for the city has gone up 20% in one year. Water's gone up 40% in three years.
Please have respect for the speaker. Sorry, Robert, go ahead.
Stormwater, you say you can't change even though there's two rates and you charge certain people more than others for no obvious reason that anybody's put forth. But today, you're going to vote on letting somebody use city water and make an ordinance or pass something special so they can do that. But you can't pass something new to make the city compliant with their sewer rates. You charge a 7% franchise fee for trash, but you only charge 3% for Pacific Power and Northwest Natural. So there seems to be a problem there. Your city council and management are a joke to the city as a joke as a person that ridiculously is inadequate because you can't seem to do your jobs. You have no common sense, as common sense is self-evident, needs basic level of sound judgment or knowledge that most adults should possess. And evidently, you cannot seem to do that because you, for over a year now, you can't answer simple questions on billing and how you bill. The city council should be appalled that your city management paid $3,000 to redo, which I've mentioned before, to redo my rain garden, because they did do it right in the first place, which actually would have only taken a few hundred dollars. They actually held me back from keeping them from doing it, and it cost you $3,000. Alls they had to do was move a few little rocks around and stuff because I already did most of the work. But instead, they took the time to bring in five crews and three pieces of equipment to completely tear it out and redo it. Talk about stupidity and ignorance on the part of a city that wants to ask us to pay for a police station when they throw away $3,000 that wasn't necessary and held me back with police.
That's time, Mr. Greenway. Thank you.
To stop them from doing it.
Thank you, Mr. Greenway. Next up, I have Ann Hurd.
Mr. Mayor, my name is Ann Hurd. I represent the Friends of the Dallas Aquatic Center nonprofit that's raised lots of money for the pool. And I just have a very short report tonight because there hasn't been that much happening. But what has been happening is really fun. Last weekend, the pool was very busy. They had a swim meet each day and two parties, party packages, you know, birthday party packages, each evening, afternoon and evening. So they were very busy those two days. And then on, last Saturday, a couple of days ago, they had an Easter egg hunt. And they hid plastic eggs all over the pool and in the water, and they had wrapped candies in them. I said, oh, they're in the water? But it didn't matter because they were all wrapped. And if the kids found, wait to hear the grand prize they get to get. If the kids found five eggs of the same color, they were entered into a raffle. And if they won the raffle, they got a pair of goggles. Isn't that exciting? I think that's being very responsible. Also, they took the second boiler away to fix it, and it's coming back this week, all fixed up without having to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to buy a new one. We just carry on. We have our annual meeting, April 30th, at 11 o'clock, and we invite the public to that meeting. And we have to do that every year, and it's April 30th. So, okay, nobody ever comes, but that's okay. Doesn't matter, but we're open if they want to come. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ann. Kim, do we have anybody on the phone?
No, we don't.
Okay. We'll public comment and move on to the consent agenda, then. Does anyone want to remove anything from the consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
City council minutes?
Okay.
Something about the budget, if I can. Just want to, I just want to make a note that the budget is, with two months left to go, we are, all departments are at or below budget. I think it's amazing that you guys have done a good job navigating this thing, so thank you for all the job you've done.
Consent agenda, a motion to approve the consent agenda with that one item removed? Approved? Second, and all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right. Michael?
Just need to make a correction on page 31, under Public Hearings, Subpoint A, and states in here that Mayor Woods closed the public hearing at 7:19, and that should be Mayor Slack.
That correction. All right.
City minutes? Council minutes?
Second?
Second.
Remove and second to approve the item removed from the agenda, the council minutes. And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right. Reports and comments from the mayor and council members. Do we have any, buddy with any comments? If not, we'll move right on to the city manager and staff reports.
Hey, Commissioner Slack, our first item is the Dallas Downtown Association Annual Report. I'll invite our Economic and Community Development Director Charlie Mitchell to the front to introduce our speakers, and the presentation is, starts on page 35 of your packet, so you can follow along.
Hello again. As your staff report indicates, the city has a contract with the DDA, and part of that contractual obligation is to give you an annual report, which is what they're here to do tonight. I'd like to call up Jason Saunders, representing the DDA. Is anybody else coming with you, Jason, or just you?
Just me.
Just Jason? Okay, so here.
Can Ann come up with me?
Jason and Ann.
Hello, I'm Jason Saunders. I'm the current president of the DDA. I've been with the DDA four years. This is my second three-year term. We've come a long way in those four years, specifically in the last six months. Want to kind of tell you what we've done in the last year and what we continue to do and what we want to do in the future. So, here we go. Last year, we were relying on 16 hours of city staffing as our admin. We did not have a physical location. We had very limited time for any events. We operated under a membership structure. We had 571 hours volunteered by 35 people, and only three of our four subcommittees were functioning. July of last year, we didn't have an executive committee, and we were down to about four board members. Since then, we've turned things around. We've hired a 20-hour-a-week manager. Thank you, Helen. We've obtained a downtown location, which is actually the building by Tater's on the corner there. We've increased our events and capacity. We've revamped our, sustain our program as opposed to a membership program. Over 1,500 volunteer hours in 2024 by over 75 volunteers. Last weekend, we did some landscaping on the corner here of the fire department. All four of our subcommittees are full and regular meeting, and we have work agendas. Sherri Stewart is the main person for Main Street, Oregon, in Oregon. She, we have progress reports. Last July, we met with her at a very dim time, to say the least. We just had a progress reporter with her last month, and here's some of her words. "I'm so impressed with all the activity happening in each of the four pillars of the Main Street. Wow, super great work. Kudos to you, your board, and volunteers." Which is high praise from Sherri.
As soon as you want, you can move the slides by hitting the spacebar or the right arrow. There you go.
Okay, there we go. Board of Directors, myself, the president, Betty Sledge is our vice president, Tara Townley is our secretary, Jennifer Robinson is our treasurer, Brian Dalton's a board member, Ron Woodruff, Lauren May, and Katie Meston. Our Promotions Committee has been the most active. They do the free community movie nights. They do the quarterly downtown cleanup days, which we did this last Saturday. Bless you. Dallas Day Parade, the downtown scarecrow contest, trick and treat on Main Street. We sponsored a free community family dance, Christmas Town Financial Body, monthly bingo fundraiser, monthly bingo fundraiser which contributes to Bambino's, different organizations throughout the year. Coming this year, we'll be coordinating with the city to do the Sounds of Summer, to eventually hopefully take it over next year. Design Committee, they do the downtown seasonal lighting, the string lighting, mural preservation, grant facilitator, Blue Garden informational pamphlet. They're working on new downtown banners to be displayed on the light poles, advocating for historical design elements and preservation, and they work with Main Street, Oregon. Economic Vitality Committee, they are working with the Yifty Gift Card Program. They are doing a new event twice a year, which is Dallas Days and Small Business Saturday. They made up a map and a brochure for where to eat for people serving jury duty. And they're working on "Imagine Your Business Here" signs downtown, as you see with the bike shop one. Organization Committee, which is the committee that wasn't functioning last year, they're responsible for fundraising, events, sponsorship, supporters, the city contract, recruitment of volunteers, committee members, executive committee members, board members, and downtown support and advertising. Policies, last year, we updated our bylaws. This year, we're updating our policies and procedures, and next year, we're going to formulate a new strategic plan. We also have an award ceremony coming up in May, which is going to award our Volunteer of the Year, Organization Partner of the Year, Project of the Year, and the President's Choice Award. Other things we have planned is the farmer's market. Last year was the first year. We're looking forward to being bigger and better this year. Downtown business support, as always, we support all local businesses, especially the downtown businesses. And our communication includes social media, website, and monthly newsletters. We share resources, historic downtown highlights, events. Our main course of funding, major revenue sources are our supporter funds, city support, event sponsorships, event participation, bingo, as mentioned earlier, and grants. Our expenditures are a 20-hour-a-week employee, our office space, operations like website, software, programming, printing, event expenses, professional development fulfilling Main Street organization requirements, marketing, and grant pass-through funding. Here's a calendar of all the exciting events we have this year. I encourage you to attend. I guess I could have, a little longer for everybody. Hint, hint. And some of the events this year, we have, again, the free monthly movie night, bingo, farmer's market, cleanup days, Sounds of Summer, the Dallas Day Parade, Discover Dallas Dash, which is something new this year and exciting, downtown scarecrow contest, trick and treat on Main Street, and the Christmas tree lighting. Any questions for me?
Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Are you ready, Brian?
All right, so our next topic is the city council vacancy supplemental questions. So, just as a reminder, the Counsel Verden resigned her position on April 3rd, and filling a vacancy was recently, the process for that was recently accepted by the city council in their, their new council rules and procedure, which involves an appointment process as long as the vacancy that you're filling is at least three months or 90 days prior to the general election, which in this case it is. And so, the first step in that, that appointment process is to identify the questions that you would like to supplement the application. So the city staff has prepared an application similar to the application for appointments of boards, committees, and commissions. And along with that, we will include any supplemental questions that the council would like to include. Those would be questions that the applicants and potential candidates would provide written responses to. Following, tonight, when we have those questions, we will start advertising for that position tomorrow, including with the application form, the questions that are identified this evening. We will run that recruitment through till the middle of May, roughly the middle of May. I think May 12th is, is when we would stop. And then we will consolidate those applications of qualified candidates, those that live within the city for at least a year prior to their appointment, and are registered voters in the state of Oregon. Those are the two qualifying requirements by our charter. And we will then invite those candidates to come to the next council meeting, which is on May 19th, to give a five-minute presentation. We will include in the council packet all the applications and the supplemental questions and their answers for the council to consider before coming to the meeting. After the presentations, the council will then deliberate and vote through a ballot process, and that's defined in the, in the rules. We'll talk about that on the day, just to make sure we understand how that'll work. That's the process. So, included in your packet here, starting on page 50 and on page 51, these are the 16 questions that have been used most recently. The last process we went through when Counsel Spivey was appointed, these are the 16 questions that you had each of the candidates answer. You can use any of these questions, some of them, all of them, none of them. You can come up with your own questions. So tonight really is just a discussion amongst the councilors of which questions you would like to have staff include in the application that would go out starting tomorrow.
Is there any discussion?
We used all of these the last time.
So the last time, you used all 16 questions?
Nothing added.
Nope. Nope, these were, these were the 16 questions right here that you used previously.
Does everyone feel like that was adequate or too much or not enough?
Seemed to be quite a bit of reading on our part, but we don't want to shortstop a candidate's ability either.
I felt like it was adequate. I don't know if it's true.
Consensus?
If you don't mind, being on the other end, the 16 questions actually were very good in that it wasn't just four questions and this is easy. You really needed to put a little time and effort to prepare, to put this together. I can't remember, I don't see here listed anything about teamwork or working together and how you would add benefit to a team. Are you open and receptive? You know, I, something along those lines.
It's a good idea. How would you word it?
If I may, we might want to add it in, add some language into question P. There are nine city council positions. What do you believe are the advantages and disadvantages of collective decision-making and shared leadership? And how do you see yourself fitting into the role of working with a team? Yada, yada.
You can also add it to question N, which is, please describe your understanding of the relationship between the city council and staff. You know, and how do you develop a, you know, a team relationship between working with, you know, the, between, between and among the councilors and city staff?
I wouldn't mind something along the lines of, when was the last time you firmly held a belief or a position and received new information that changed your opinion or view?
I'd start that. I want to restate that question to the best of your ability, noting that it's been recorded and we can always capture it later.
You bet. When was the last time that you had a firmly-held position or belief and then changed your position or belief based on new information that you received from others?
Else?
Were we talking about making that a separate question by itself or combining with?
Separate question altogether?
Seventeen.
Yeah.
Amending question number P.
Larry, can you talk into your microphone, please?
Are we amending question number P as well? Everybody in agreement with that?
Do you want us to amend question P or question N to involve an aspect of teamwork as well? Okay. Do you want it to fall under P or N?
P.
Under P, okay.
I think P is more appropriate.
And Brian, are just a consensus?
It's a consensus from the council. So it sounds like you would have seventeen total questions. We'll amend question P to include some elements of teamwork within that, and then you'll add question R, which would be, when was the last time that you held the firmly, or had a firm position that you, or belief that you changed based on, you know, new information that you received? So, does that sound like a good conference of lists? So seventeen total questions, those two amendments, one added and one amended. All right, that's good enough. We will incorporate all those questions into an application, and that will be available starting tomorrow. And it'll be advertised on our city website, and we'll push it out through our other channels of communication to the public.
Okay. All right. During that, we have a first reading of ordinance, ordinance number 1905.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Slack, ordinance 1905 is an ordinance adopting the Lock Realm Ordinance 1905 is an ordinance adopting the Lock Rail Node Master Plan and amending the Dallas Comprehensive Plan and MAP to update plan policies on allowed land uses, transportation networks, and standards within the Lock Rail Mixed Use Node, and to expand the boundary of the node.
Where are the ordinance to pass this first reading? Second reading of ordinances, ordinance 1907.
Thank you, Mayor Slack. Ordinance 1907 is an ordinance establishing a special exception to the prohibition against the provision of city water to property outside the city limits and urban growth boundary.
This is the thing we talked about last time?
This is. So just as a reminder for councilors, there are two water services on a property that's located outside the city limits on 2255 Elliott Road. That particular property is on a water line, that's a city water line that extends, you know, beyond this property to other properties that also have active water accounts that was established several decades ago. And so in this case, the person is requesting to decommission or not, no longer use those two water services, but would like to reserve the right to be able to establish those services again in the future. Because they're outside the urban grow, or because they're outside the city limits and urban growth boundary, we do provide through ordinance the ability to have those water connections if there was an agreement in place prior to a certain date. This ordinance would effectively be that agreement, noting that at some point in time, these water services were allowed by the city. And so not having that paperwork, you know, on file today, this kind of memorializes that those services were there and that the city council is willing to reestablish those in the future if this person desires.
Questions or discussion? Larry?
Where are these documents going to reside because of the previous?
Yeah, so ordinances are permanent records that the city maintains, and we, we maintain, Kim can answer this question better, so she'll correct me if I state this wrong, which I probably will. We maintain at least all of our ordinances for a year in-house, and then those are also maintained in the state archives system. Is that correct, Kim? Yep.
Forever?
Forever.
Okay, if there's no more discussion, I'll ask the secretary to call the roll.
Counsel Beriantos?
Yes.
Counsel Blaser?
Yes.
Counsel Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Counsel Jants?
Yes.
Counsel Schilling?
Yes.
Counsel Shane?
Yes.
Counsel Spivey?
Yes.
Counsel President Briggs?
Yes.
Ordinance 1907 passes eight to zero.
Great, we have no more ordinances. We have one resolution, though, Resolution 3547, adopting the Dallas Tree Management Plan.
I don't need to read it, you did.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, this is just a simple resolution. The city council reviewed the tree management plan in your work session at the beginning of this month, and this is just a resolution acknowledging the approval and adoption of that plan.
Discussion, I'll ask the secretary to call the roll.
Counsel Blaser?
Yes.
Counsel Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Counsel Jants?
Yes.
Counsel Schilling?
Yes.
Counsel Shane?
Yes.
Counsel Spivey?
Yes.
Counsel President Briggs?
Yes.
Counsel Beriantos?
Yes.
Resolution 3547 passes with a vote of eight to zero.
Does anyone have any other business to bring before the council?